Roger, would you say?
Yes.
What's?
Our heavenly Father, we come to you alone as it is actually on this place. Here today with these council members, love and be for here for the people of all. The city of, they were the ones that said, and the one that has happened so many years, the city of bless their family, the ones who lost. We ask all this year, heavenly Father, to make payment.
I agree.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To you, I'm done.
Well, welcome everybody tonight, starting early so that we can break for a public hearing at 5:30 and then resume our meeting right after that. So we can all go through the catalog of the people that are interested. So let's get right along with it. Perimeter minutes?
Yeah.
I so move.
All those in favor, that's unanimous.
Financial board?
I so move.
Second.
All those in favor, that's also unanimous.
Committee reports, Evans Committee.
Now, she called me, I know for sure, and I warned her that you were going to meet early. I didn't know if the rest of you were here or not.
Okay, it's okay.
She may come in, but I.
And if she does, well, I can say she needs to speak. You talking about? You said she, now you're naming the, the name of the source. Okay. We'll check back, because you left that. Fire committee?
Fire department made fifteen runs in the month of November, and it's time to do fire inspections for January, February. Are you, you asking for a person? He's asking for a part-time person, work up to twenty hours, for ten dollars an hour to accomplish that. So I so move.
Second by the end, it's all those in favor, that's unanimous.
The budget committee?
The general fund has a beginning balance of a million, one seventy-three, three forty-six, receipts of one hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and five, dispersments of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, ninety-nine. This is the ending bank balance of a million, one sixty-one, three fifty-two. Straight fund, we have a beginning balance of one fifty-two, one twelve, receipts of twenty-four thousand, two oh one, and dispersments of twenty-one thousand, two thirty-three. At the ending bank balance of one fifty-five, one eighty-one. I may have missed that. Amy just gave me the updated one. Yeah, there was a little difference. In the general fund, the beginning balance is a million, six, a million, one sixty-two, six forty. And the ending bank balance on the street fund is the same. No, no. Me, it's a hundred and fifty-five thousand, two fifty-three.
I so move. Current one.
All those in favor, that's unanimous.
Plan Commission, Mr. Mowers? Plan Commission, do you have anything to say before we let Ms.?
I don't want to hear any of that.
Okay. Early you've got the floor, if you'd like. Yeah, you want to speak now? Okay. Okay, I see that now, I was going to let you speak then, that'd be fine.
No, you're on agenda.
You'll be speaking after the break now. I tried, I gave you ten. Okay, community development, Mr. Herman.
I did hear a rumor that the pharmacy going in the old region. It's just a rumor, I bet with the phone.
Yeah, I've heard that too, and, and, but until we get something.
Yeah.
Better let it go. And we all hope that's, you know, fact. And that's about only update, you know, I'll go ahead, you know, and talk about that. You know, we've also got that building, you know, for lease, for sale. If it hadn't already arranged, arrangements already been made. We've got the Fred's building, it's now got a sign out front for seller lease. Collison Properties for seller lease. The Town and Country Sexton Foods building for seller lease. So there's a lot of opportunities here in Malnab, you know, right now, we shouldn't include that. And we have to look at it that way, folks, we have to look at it as opportunities. And I am glad to hear that's, that's rolling along, and that's been working for some time. So Parks and Recreation, Mr. Fagan?
We have committee and the mayor have come to an agreement with Chris Johnson on the Parks Director. We'll need to meet on that, take a vote on that tonight. We have come, we've revised the Park Director duties more for a contractor instead of an employee. Their term has been changed, and we'll report on that when we're going to have to go into executive session, we can do it at the end of, of the closing of the meeting to finalize that, but we do have that arranged. They have agreed on a compensation package. We're pretty well ready to go on that, so everything else that needs to be discussed will need to be discussed in executive session before we come out and vote on it. I don't know if we, do we have the light fixed or not?
The, at the parking lot?
The security light?
Matt's going to get to it this week, he said.
Okay, Matt. Hunsman? Okay. That's the only other thing I had, except we need to, we need to keep paying attention to the parking lot down there, not let it get out of hand. If we can, if we can go to, to spring like it is, it would be better, and then go in and make any repairs, new chips or whatever, get a better, get a better base in it. Other than that, that's, that's it for right now.
Okay. Police committee, Mr. Herman?
We had thirteen hundred and seventy-five calls for service, two hundred and twenty security checks, three hundred and fifty-five crackups off, one hundred and seventy-two site stations, sixty-three warrants served, thirty-seven community service papers, nine felony cases filed, twenty misdemeanor cases filed, one hundred and thirty-six full business owners, six registered sex offenders, and six home business owners. Do you have something?
I get it right, reported to Mr. Herman. You look down here, try to get some things that are needed to be approved before the procedure, which is they hire the staff full-time, or like that, it's like all the rates per count, and then it's full-time versus part-time, and then send them to their dad in January.
I so move. Second.
All those in favor, that's unanimous, that'll bring him to fourteen dollars?
Yes, ma'am. Then, there's two bids in here, we were only able to get two bids between Amy and myself. A lot of people are busy and don't want the bids on some of the small jobs, and these are bids for drains for the wash-off of food at the dog shelter. One's one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars, and one is two thousand one hundred and fifty. These are for drainage.
Now, I've talked to Larry about, about this, it's, this isn't, I don't see a drawing.
Not here. It's tacking, and so on. He met with Amy and myself, and families, they discussed what would be the drainage.
Now, is this just the drains for the existing kennel, right?
It's for both sides, for the outer kennels.
Okay. Describe it, what are?
It's a drain, you wash poop out of the, out the kind of tree into a drain that follows down to the.
Okay, but this is, I guess what I, what I have got in mind, and I need to know if we're on the same page here, we, we ladies cannot discuss this, you know, at a meeting. On each side of the building, we're talking about four, one solid slab, that's got a drain, like a curve, like a drain on the bottom, and it will be angled to wherever it goes.
That is not.
That's not what, okay, so that's what I want you to describe a little bit.
So what we're doing is running PVC pipe, cutting it in half, comes off the slab, runs it out, rock off one end, gets to the other end, then put a lead, the PVC, that's got a fat, completely in half, then he's going to downsize it to the four inches, we're going from a six inch, so four inches down into the drain.
Well, those, those runways that we had four, you know, the other day, does that drain go where in relation to those runways?
At the end of the.
Each one of them?
Yes, there's a whole drain, remember, on the whole kennel.
I'm not going to be for spending that kind of money for, for that, because I talked to Larry, and if this is what Larry and I had talked about, I would be for it, but I've got a little bit more extensive drainage situation planned than this.
Sounds good.
What did you and him talk about?
Pouring a one-four slab on each side of those that would connect into those runways, just looked like a sheet of paper, with the drain right here, the drain would run into an actual septic tank, where the solids will go down. You know, the fluids will come up to the top and go into a PVC line that will go directly into the sewer main. And in that way, it could be ma, it can almost maintain itself, they'll spray it off, you know, once or twice a day. And after they let them out on the runs, they can still have, I don't know how they're, if they're going to let them out individual or something, you know, you know, to do that, that, that'll collect all the poop, and it'll go all the way down, go into a septic line, and then go into the sewer. And Larry and I have talked about that, but I haven't seen this.
That's what he's been on it?
It sounds like it, but that's not what he just described to us. He's described it doing PVC, PVC.
There's no concrete slab in it for it, you're going to get more than that.
It's going to cost more than, than, than that, but you know, what he's talking about doing is putting PVC lining in half, and letting the water drip, but I don't see how it's going to drain, I mean, that's my point, you've got these runways that don't have anything on the side to guide the, the water, you know, the poop, to go down and to get into, into that pipe right there. You can spray and get most of it, but you're still going to have the contamination if you don't have it all going to where you can wash it all off and then disinfect it. I mean, it just needs to be that way, I don't know how to say it.
Go on, we'll table it to him, let.
Let's just table it and get us a committee to go down there and look at it, and I think everybody will agree. We, we, we talked about it quite a bit, you ladies on the committee, I mean, does that not sound more in line with what we discussed?
I'm not part of that conversation. Y'all, we're going to.
Well, I know, but what, what we did talk about was more like what I just described, is that right, or wrong, Anita?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I agree, but you know, and a lot of that already, you know, had planned and being done, I'm trying to make it, you know, work today. So we'll just table it.
All right, these items are already purchased, the Grace Communications, it's a thousand twenty-two dollars, thirty-eight cents, Ties State Radio had to be worked on, so I'm going to go in and add all three items. Animal Control Jackets, they purchased themselves some jackets, two thousand twenty, sorry, two hundred and nine dollars and seven cents. Then Mayor Bart Brison's bags, fifty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents that he wanted ordered to pass it out. The total comes to one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-eight cents.
I so move.
That's it for me.
Who seconded that, did anyone?
Second.
All those in favor, unanimous.
Thank you. Great Alley.
Can I speak really quick, since I have a little.
Go ahead and come up to the podium.
I just wanted to address the council and let everybody know that Deb and Anita and I are stepping down from the Animal Shelter Committee, effective right now. We feel like we have wasted our time all year long, our ideas and suggestions have been ignored or not taken seriously, causing more work for the shelter workers, more money being spent from the city, and we hear that's the main complaint from the city, is how much the shelter is costing, and we try to save money and toss out ideas that help with that, and those ideas are not being taken seriously or even listened to at all. So we're done. I found out today that the ordinance that we spent four months trying to update never got written into law, so it was totally useless and a waste of our time. And we just all feel like we have better things to do with our time, and we can be more effective and help the shelter in other ways, not through the avenue of a city committee. So just to let y'all know, we are finished with that.
Thank you, and thank you for your time. Street Alley?
The only thing I have is, now Larry's out, but he gave me a couple of bids on pushing the dump up and fixing that road. We had one from Shane, Shane's last name. I can move? The Shane brothers, what's their name? Shane? Horton Brothers. Yeah, the Horton Brothers gave us one just to push the dump up, they couldn't do the road, was twenty-two fifty. Crenshaw's will do all the dozer and the road for twenty-four hundred. So I think we just need to, we got to get some attention done on that, I just think we need to get that taken care of.
And now, this, out here at?
At the old dock?
Liberty Valley?
Yes, yes. Then we got a new gate to put up out there also, when they get that done.
So the low bid was Crenshaw?
Crenshaw will do all the gravel, I mean, we'll purchase gravel, but they'll haul it and they'll blade the road or grain it or whatever they do, and make it all right, haul in some shale or whatever.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Other than that, that's all I have.
All those in favor, that's unanimous.
Oh, we got some job bid, I mean, some truck bids, a lot more.
They're on down here, but do you want me to do them now?
No, that's fine, we'll go.
Okay.
Okay, airport committee?
Gary Bell today, and he said he's got an electrician coming to work on the lights on the east end of the runway, there's a short somewhere, and then he said they've got the lights on the west end going, but he said what's happening is when somebody's mowing, they're knocking them off and it's shorting them out. And then I talked to Alex Smith today at McClellan, and he said he was putting in the mail today, the grant application to be signed, and just says it is signed out to send it to the ADA.
Sounds good.
And other than that, that's all I've got.
Ceiling situation, we just, not going to get it done?
Well, that's part of this with Alex Smith.
Okay.
That's what that is for.
I guess I just didn't realize that. Glad to hear that. And we're still going to be waiting till about when on that, you think?
He didn't give me a time as to when it would be done, but we got to do the grant application and get the bidding done before anything else can be done.
It'll be a while then. Okay, I did receive a call from, I never did understand agency, but they were updating, you know, some information for airports yesterday, so, and I told them that we didn't have any business, you know, going on out there with each other, any deal. Okay, buildings and grounds, Mr. Prior. Mr. Mowers, would you like to present?
Yeah, in your paperwork, there's a kind of, over that door, the police department. That shit's totally doesn't work. They have to go through the open about four feet, like, I've never been doing that in here. Got a call from the over that door in Thursday. They'll rebuild what's there, they'll get new springs, they'll get a new motor and a lift, they're getting new panels. The bad's going to cost you twenty-three hundred and fifty dollars, and four hundred and fifty to add, just to that motor from the top. He's come up with a second proposal, tear everything out, repair, redo the track, put in new springs, full work, brand new lift, for two thousand dollars. I'd like to see that second.
He going to put in new tracks, instead of redo the existing tracks?
He was going, the new one won't, you were redoing the existing track, the new track and then.
Okay, so they are going to take the new track, replace the tracks too. That's what mine has a problem with the tracks, and that's, that was my concern. Sounds like what we need to do, what we discussed only a little bit while ago, so motion to that? I would make motion that we take the option for putting the whole new door. Second.
I have a question, it says this, with the standard lift system, how, that door's like sixteen foot tall, isn't it?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Eleven and a half. But it, it follows the roof line when it gets up to the top, the track?
How wide is it? I, I don't want to spend the money for a lighter duty, and then we have to eat it in a year or two.
Oh, for, you know, that over center?
Right. And the, the motor, and the track assembly, whatever, because the bigger that door is, and the more times you use it up and down, the more strain it puts on that track assembly, and the more.
They're going to guarantee it for how long?
A year, the most.
I don't know if they're going to handle it.
I'm, I'll go ahead and vote for it, but I'd like to see us put an option in there, if we can get it rated to the heavier duty for no more than five hundred dollars more, we upgrade it. Because you and I both know, even if your house don't last a lot, doesn't last a lifetime.
You're talking about the whole new system, right?
It's cheaper than the other.
Yeah, just lighter duty.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying.
You're saying that the new one is lighter than.
I guarantee you, energy put that.
Are they insulated now? Are they insulated?
If it is now, then he's going to put it back the way it was. But isn't.
Let's review it.
It needs to be insulated.
Let's table it to win.
There's no need.
Several times a day. Okay, let's just.
Building insulated?
Just, just, just table it, I think so.
You're talking several times a day.
But you got a point there, we need to make sure we know what we're getting. All right, moving right along, anything else in buildings and grounds? No, sir. Personnel committee, Mr. Hodges? Has everybody read your new handbook?
I thought we was going to meet over that again. I read it. When we going to meet over again?
We need to.
I got a lot of ink on mine.
We got, we got time to do that.
Not tonight, Pammy.
We don't have it.
Well, when my time comes, I'm out of here, so y'all just keep going on.
We could, we got a special meeting.
We can adopt it in January, won't be a problem with it.
The handbook?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And we've gone, what, nineteen years without it?
Yeah.
Since twelve.
Doesn't wonder you hadn't been since.
About two thousand.
You want to set a Personnel Committee meeting next Tuesday?
Get close to the holiday now.
That's why I'm asking now.
We've got to get it done and send it to the attorney, so.
Have to.
I'd say another month.
You have to have an ordinance.
Yeah, I'd say we'll, we'll schedule it in January.
Okay.
After our January meeting.
Okay, we'll just schedule a committee meeting on the committee meeting mat. Okay, moving right along. Water and Sewer Committee, Mr. Hodges?
Uh, past dues, we had four thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-six cents, nine hundred and fifty dollars in new deposits. Oh.
I had to run out for emergency.
I didn't figure out where we are on the dollars or cents. I've got three sheets here.
In a, an account?
Yeah. Is that what you want?
Is this the one?
Yes. Well, I, I wasn't sure, that's not, not normally the format I get it in.
I told, okay, sorry, I thought they were all the same.
Okay, okay, uh, we'll do that down to end. Paying the bills. Now, is this the bills? I'm looking for bills.
You got yours?
Give me the dollar.
And water too.
I don't, they're not attached to this, are they?
I didn't find them.
No.
Email me that, please. The other work until the end, I used bills. Do you have anything else I can do?
I'm good, I don't have anything, uh, same thing to be doing on our wastewater plant. Had a little emergency, now I got to go rebuild a manhole and a riser, but other than that, everything's been going pretty good. Alvin, I called ADH today, and I'm back with you.
Hello, Dave.
I left a message, the main guy, I was supposed to talk to.
Sounds good, everything I've noticed from your office looks good. I know you have had several leaks to be working on.
I have.
I got you. Why don't we just take us a break right now, break it over business, and call the median to order for the public hearing, and one item is going to be Swartz property at, what is it? Two oh five? Chuck, do you want to speak, are you going to make a speech, or?
You're just going to read what?
Is there anybody here that is here in relation to the two oh five North Main Swartz property? Wait, ready?
And the other one is the drain.
Do you mind going to the podium?
Yeah, we had two houses taken down, one was two oh five North Main Street, and the other one was three oh four Brandon Street. And the purpose of the public hearing is to approve the amounts that we spent to tear these houses down. And the total for North Main Street was forty-nine hundred and fifteen dollars. And the total for three oh four Brandon Street is seven thousand fifteen dollars and seventy cents, and that's because that whole house was covered with asbestos siding, so they had to handle that special in getting rid of the material.
Seven, no fifteen? Seven thousand fifteen?
Yeah, seven thousand. Yeah, seven thousand fifteen, seventy. So if we've got anybody here that wants to speak out on either one of those properties, uh. Do drop in, is listed as the owner of, uh, Brandon Street. Uh, which is Mark Payrow. And he. He thinks it's a good idea, we're putting a lien on it, cause it, the house don't belong to him anymore, it was given. Given back to the, his wife, just before she passed away, so, uh. He doesn't, he's not gonna try to stop putting the lien on the property. Yes.
I move that we proceed with piling of the liens, both properties.
Second.
All those in favor?
The resolution's in your packet there.
Are you ready for me to read this? Resolution number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-eight. A resolution approving amounts of liens to be certified to the White County Tax Collector. Against certain properties in the city of Ball knob Arkansas as a result of grass cutting expenses. And abatement of other nuisances and for other purposes. Whereas in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated fourteen fifty-four nine oh one, the city of Ball knob has corrected conditions existing. On certain lots or other real property within the city of Ball knob and is entitled. To compensation pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated fourteen fifty-four nine oh one. Whereas state law also provides for a lien against the subject properties with the amount of a lien. To be determined by the city council at a hearing held after notice to the owners thereof a certified or publication. A certified mail or publication, see exhibit A attached here too. With said amount plus processing fees to be thereafter certified to the White County Tax Collector. And whereas a public hearing for the purpose of determining such liens has been set for five thirty P M. On December nine, two thousand nineteen, in order to allow for service of the attached notice of same. Upon the listed property owners by certified mail or publication in the Cersei daily citizen, citizen as is necessary. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Ball knob Arkansas, section one. That after notice to property owners, a public hearing was held at five thirty. P M on December nine, two thousand nineteen. For the purpose of determining the amount of liens, if any, to be filed against certain real property. As a result of grass cutting and abatement of other nuisances by the city of Ball knob. Section two, that after said public hearing. The amounts listed in exhibit A are hereby certified and are to be forwarded to the White County Tax Collector. Section three, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect. From and after its passage and approval until the lien has been satisfied. It would be passed today, um, uh, December nine, two thousand nineteen, and then exhibit A. Is notices hereby given that lien amounts upon the following described liens have been certified. By the Ball knob city council at a council meeting held on December nine, two thousand nineteen at six P M in the courtroom of the Ball knob city hall. Zero zero three dash zero zero four five four dash zero zero zero. Is a lien on property at two oh five North Main Street. Belonging to Miss, Missine or Maestain and Ornuaves Suarez. Uh, then, uh, zero zero three dash zero zero eight one eight. Is a lien on property at three oh four Brandon Street. With the owner, state, Do Drop Enterprises Incorporated.
I move we accept resolution number twenty nineteen dash twenty-eight.
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. Are we going to declare the public hearing closed?
Nobody's here to speak on it, so. Your motion to the effect.
I still move.
All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Public hearing closed and reopen the, uh. December meeting of Ball knob. Uh, welcome up with old business. Purchase of the Collison property, this is for the, uh. Lots and defense down by the, uh, street department. Uh, we've all agreed on the four thousand amount and there'll be some closing costs. Uh, I was, I've been looking at my email to see if it popped up, but it's coming in today. So I'm, I'm estimating. Two fifty. So if y'all would be comfortable with allowing closing costs up to five hundred. Uh, plus the four thousand feet, I've already signed the contract. When it comes, Pammy and I'll write the check and you'll get the, uh, warranty.
I still move.
Second.
David, did you second that?
Yes.
All those in favor? It's unanimous. Ordinance number zero, no, I'm sorry, O dash nineteen dash zero nine. Being enacted by the city council of the city of Ball knob, White County, Arkansas. An ordinance to adopt the proposed operating twenty twenty budget. Section one, the proposed twenty twenty budget for the city of Ball knob, White County, Arkansas presented December. I'm sorry, November twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen is hereby adopted. Section two, adoption of this budget will constitute appropriation for the purposes cited. Section three, no expenditures of appropriated funds. Shall be made from any fund other than specified in the attached copy of the proposed budget, budget unless amended. Section four, this ordinance shall be in full. Force and effect from and after the date of its passage.
I move we accept the second reading ordinance number O dash twenty nineteen dash zero nine. And has to be placed on the January budget, I change the reading.
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous.
New business? East project from Ball knob schools, is anyone here to speak on the east project? I think, I think they. Somebody say something? Okay.
We haven't gotten to those yet. Um. Uh, Nancy has given. I think there's four or five here. Uh, and someone will need to amend the agenda to include these resolutions. Wait, wait, there's, uh. I think there's five, is there five Nancy? There's seven.
Yes.
Seven. There's seven.
David, do we, do we need to recognize you now?
Ms. Bonds, uh, y'all didn't hear, I was looking for y'all a while ago, will y'all go ahead and approach the podium, y'all got the floor.
Did, did y'all want to say something, am I in the service, did you want to say something? You were, but we started early today. And we, we bypassed you until you got here. So do you need to do this and go? How long's it gonna take?
Yeah, we've already taken care of.
We already passed that ordinance, special meeting.
It's been, uh, published in the newspaper, y'all are good to go.
We done that especially.
We will, we will mail you a, a, a. Signed copy of it if you came in. That's all it is, believe it you. I saw it in the paper. And we did go last time. And we, we do appreciate you coming. I, I told them that I had to talk to you and talk to her and I said. We're gonna meet early today on account of public hearing. And we appreciate you being here, we appreciate what you do for us. You have a question about us? Ring our bell. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, man.
It's okay.
We're getting ready anyway, so that's, that's good. Um. Everybody's got one of these and, and, uh, the east project at school is interested in, there's been several people that have been interested. Blame that, but they're interested in, uh, having some urals painted. And my answer to y'all is you got to have a one-on-one understanding and a written agreement. And we're gonna require a written agreement. Agreement with the, uh, building owners. So, uh, as long as that's understood, you wanna go ahead and take over from page two?
All right, my name is Madison Locke, I'm a student at the Ball knob high school. And my east group contains of three other girls, Josie Duncan, Aubriana Crafton, and Jessica Wood. Along with our community partner, Kaitlyn Suarez. Our project started as an idea to let people express themselves through an art form. I personally know a lot of the talented kids at our school that love drawing and painting. With our alley, we provided a private space for anyone who wishes to apply and is approved. We also think this is an opportunity to bring people from around the state or country to come to our little town. I myself love art and love seeing art pieces from our talented students. The age limit we have to apply for is fourteen and up, and if you're an adult and have family, you can apply for two spaces.
Yes. You wanna go ahead and go to. Back to my page, let, let, be efficient.
Okay, so basically, our problem is we don't have a little, like. How to explain this? Not a lot of people can express themselves the way they want to. And we have many talented kids, many talented people in our community. That love art, and I thought as maybe that would be in a way of bringing our alley to our community, and then people express themselves. I also thought it as a good way to bring visitors and to bring. People to our businesses, our local businesses such as Farmer's Cafe and Sonic and other things like that.
Where would you, where would you be hanging?
Well, we thought if we got approval from the business owners of the museum, this, that lot in between, the alley in between that. And the old, um, clinic right there. Uh, if we could get approval for that, that would be one space where we could do it.
What I think, what I think we need to do is, uh. Ha- have you, Ms. Bonds, uh, set up with, uh, like a tour? You know, walk through? And we can talk about all that, because there, I don't know if y'all realize, but there are some existing old urals on those. Certain buildings, you know, right now. And, uh, Ms. Bonds, does that sound like a good idea to you to have a walk through and discuss all this? And, uh, we'll, we'll table it for tonight, let's, let's get a, uh, time that y'all wanna put it together. And, uh, and when you wanna set it up, I'll holler at some of the councilmen, we'll, uh, have a walk through on this and discuss it further.
This is, this is kinda like the, uh. Art alley in Cersei.
Yes.
My, my granddaughter teaches art up here and she approached me with this. I don't know about. Use of the property, and I don't know how they did it in Cersei.
I know they did say that they had to get approval from the business owners. And also, one of the problems we had is how are we gonna get electricity to provide lighting? So that's what I needed to talk to y'all about, is like how we're gonna do that.
Some of the, some of these.
It's really attractive in Cersei.
Oh, yeah.
It brings a lot of people in, especially in this. Revolution, business revolution they had, it really came in handy.
I'm sure we can.
She participated in them, she painted some of them.
Yes.
The art alley.
I had a student paint one on one of my old buildings up behind my house.
Oh, they're really neat. Some of these walls that, that we're talking about right here are not, uh. The surface, you know, it's peeling off, you know, and whatnot. So that's what we, when we have a walk through, we'll talk about, you know, maybe even open up some other ideas, you know, some other walls that, that y'all might consider.
Okay.
But I would say that we need to give serious consideration to this, because we have given lip service to the idea of rejuvenating downtown Ball knob. And here we have an opportunity. And now we're gonna table it and say, well, we might have a better idea. I applaud a group from a high school that would take the initiative while we as adults have just talked about. And I, I'll be honest with you, I don't think we need a walk through, I think we need to. Get on the. Get on the bandwagon and get behind this, because we really want to bring tourism dollars to Ball knob and things. We need to take a page from once Cersei is done. We don't need to just talk about stuff, we need to do something. We're still gonna have to get permission from the landowners, so. Yeah, the only one that we can give permission on, and I would be a hundred percent. You know, for would be the city property. And if you wanna make a motion to that effect, I'm. I make a motion that the city give. The okay for the east project to begin the art alley with our property.
And that was drugstore, the one we just read? That, is that what you're talking about?
That's what we're talking about.
Okay.
And, you know, we could consider any other properties as well. I'm all for this a hundred percent, it's just I wanna do it right.
Do we have a second?
I will.
All those in favor? That's unanimous.
Great, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We hit, who would be contact person? Ms. Bonds? Okay. Make sure somebody's got your phone number.
Mr. Mayor has.
Yeah, we've been communicating on this project for a while, I'm glad we're getting going. Okay, um. Ms. Mary Lou Smith.
Okay. I gave each one of you. A little package of stuff there. And it contains all the final warning letters that we have mailed this year. Condemnations. Grass, junk car. Uh, debris in the yard warnings, the ones that were resolved, the houses that have been taken down. Some are still pending. That's just an update for the end of the year of the progress and what we have accomplished. We wanna thank all of y'all for all your support this year and helping us get this stuff done, we're looking to have a bigger, better twenty twenty with your support. I noticed in the code enforcement budget, there's been ten thousand dollars in the abatement lien amount for years. It's never been raised, it's never been changed, seldom ever any money used out of it. I would like to ask the council to consider increasing that to twenty-five thousand dollars for the year of twenty twenty.
I might move to that effect?
I'll say.
I think we put, we put twenty in.
She gonna put twenty five?
I know, but we already put twenty in. We busy at twenty.
Okay, so.
So you're gonna raise it to twenty-five?
And we have several properties that were condemned in March, we've never had a response from the owners. They've made no effort to do anything whatsoever. At, today, we sent what we call a final warning letter. Telling those people they need to come to this council meeting, January the sixth. And address this council as to why they have done no, nothing, no effort. They've responded to nothing, they have not come to Mr. Mowers. Nor myself or anybody on the com- planning committee with a plan or saying, yes, we're gonna do it, we're gonna start it. They've done absolutely nothing. And the warning letter actually says, this is your final warning. Either come to this meeting in January or on, that is January sixth, or on January seventh, you will be written a ticket. I don't know any other way to get across to these people. You got to do something. You know, the first thing was just the resolution was give you the chance. You've got sixty days to come say, I'm gonna fix it, here's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna take it down, I need some time. In that sixty days, if you have done nothing, your property is condemned. Well, when it's condemned, do something. We do have a lot of citizens that stepped up and done the right thing. And I appreciate every single one of them. Cause a lot of people, only the warning letter is all it took. Kenneth Crimes took his house down from a warning letter. Mr. Jesse Thompson took his house down from a warning letter. The Keaties cleaned up their lot from a warning letter. But everybody in this town don't step up and do the right thing. And, you know, I, I don't want to be mean to anybody, that's, you know, that's not what this is about. It's the thing that some people do and some don't, so what's right for the people that did step up and do the right thing? If we don't enforce it to those that don't? And we have seven houses that need to be inspected. They were condemned in March. The people has never done anything. We need an inspection of these houses. I asked, went to Chuck, me and Nancy did, and discussed this, and he told us to go to the phone book and find an inspector in the book to get him inspected because he was not doing any inspections.
Why? Why? Have you not been doing inspections?
I'm gonna do an inspection, rightful woman.
For permits? Permit inspection?
No construction.
Well, how can you give a permit if you're not a building inspector? That's what I mean.
Yeah.
If you're writing out permits and you're a building inspector, right, you know what to do. How can you not inspect a piece of property? But you can write a permit, I don't-
Well, I'm, I'm giving them these papers and permits for taking a building out. Something's wrong with that.
So you don't know how to do it? You just write them a permit?
Well.
I mean, you're writing them a permit for what?
For them to, allow them to-
But what qualifies you to give them a permit if you're not qualified to do a house inspection? Or even once they get it done?
The place that we're going, I gotta be the building inspector. Then there should be a class that I have to go-
Actually, we have a, I have an idea where I just didn't have orders. Operating under, under by the mayor.
Chuck, what was that sheet of paper that you gave me the other day, uh, that was attached to your application to go to a class? Is it one of the ordinance that, uh, allows you to operate as a building inspector?
That was the ordinance that I adopted.
Since we don't have a licensed code inspector, it, it allows you as an appointed, you know, person
Yeah.
To do that. Well, that was for high back, you know, hitting an area was what that was for. But I think it would apply to, to, you know, your position, you know, right here. So, uh, I would like to see you, uh, do what you can, you know, I know you can't do them all at one time. But let's work together and try to see what we can work through until we get a, you know, a licensed code inspector in here, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Seven. And my last thing is we do not, we are not having a December planning commission meeting. I announced that at our planning commission meeting, but some of you that wasn't there, just for the record.
So the date, what, what would be the date of the January one?
The second Tuesday, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
Council meeting-
The sixth and the seventh, seventh would be the fourteenth.
Yes, the, January fourteenth will be the next planning commission meeting. But we should, we were scheduled to have one tomorrow night, but at our last planning commission meeting, I announced that that we wouldn't be having it because of the holidays, but so-
Party in Maryland.
Get with the program, Smith. If I had a party, you wouldn't be invited.
Can I ask a question about, um, discussing about raising
Yes.
Did you just say we need to vote on it?
We did. We did. Last second, if we didn't vote on it?
Okay.
Okay, there's twenty thousand in there, so we're increasing it five thousand dollars. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
There's your answer. There was some scuttlebutt, you know, fixing to happen, what you were just asking about. I said, there was some discussion that we were fixing to do that. I'm glad you brought it up. We're all, we're all very appreciative of everything that you do ladies and the whole commission has done, uh, to work towards cleaning up the city. Uh, it's been needed to be done for a long time, and, uh, there'll be a lot to discuss at this January fourteenth meeting. Hopefully we'll have some changes to announce. A lot of accomplishments. We appreciate what, what y'all done.
Don't play? No, we're not gonna do those just yet. We're, uh, didn't, Johnny, didn't you ask that they be tabled the resolutions or no? Did, did I misunderstand? Sorry. These resolutions? You didn't?
Not them.
No. She said, said they were gonna do them on down the road.
Okay, moving-
We are, we're still on your road.
Fuel purchases. I'm not gonna leave until we're done.
Okay.
Okay, um, can we do them all at once?
It's when we get there.
Okay, so fuel purchases?
Uh-huh.
Okay, uh, what, what have we got on that? Does everybody understand what, what that is?
Well, you, you asked me to put it on there because you would like Jeff Brownerville to, the police department to buy fuel from there. And I don't know which other departments, but you did ask me, so there it is.
Thank you. That was what we discussed.
Uh-huh.
Um, I asked Mr. Brownerville to, uh, get clearance from, uh, his owner, station owner, or provider, the gas provider. I don't have to say it. Where's Jeff? There you are. Uh, would you like to come to the podium and probably put it in better words than I can?
Uh, I, I do appreciate the opportunity to sell fuel to the city, but thinking about this over the weekend, I, I, I believe it would be better suited for the city to buy fuel from a twenty-four hour
Establishment.
Establishment, and I, and I, I think you'd be better off if you keep it at one location instead of spreading it out. It's, it's gone, it's really too big a hassle. Say, say you did approve to buy from me, and y'all bought three, four hundred dollars a month from me. There's a lot of paperwork that goes, that's involved in that, and I make five cents a gallon on fuel, so, you know, it's not really worth the hassle for me to have to carry the balance until the check's paid.
You do realize that I have no intentions of, of doing a hundred percent of business?
Yes, I, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Twenty-four hour.
Well, but I, I think that you really ought to consider, it, it's not fair to any of them. Uh, well, it's, 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 it's kind of a catch twenty-two.
We're already, we're already, I just want you to realize, we're already doing business with the two other, with Phillip sixty-six and with Shell. We're just going to open up to do partial business with you.
Yeah.
That's all it was.
Okay, well, if, if you're already doing with them, it prob- you're probably just better off to stick with them and, and I'll, I'll just drop out of it.
Address them soon.
Okay.
Appreciate your concern. Open bids. For the sale of the-
The first bid is from Brittany Wyatt. Uh, she has placed a bid on the mower for five hundred seventy-five dollars. Next one is a bid on the truck.
What was the name on that?
Brittany Wyatt, W Y A T T. This one is from Watson's Auto Sales, and he bids twelve hundred and one dollar.
Lawnmower?
No, the truck. This one is on the lawn mower five oh five, five hundred five dollars. Watson's. Uh-huh. This one's Rufus Williams. He has placed a bid on the truck for five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Cody Glaze, and this is for the Gravely Lawnmower. Three hundred and fifty. Joe Spradlin has bid on the Chevy three-quarter ton. Six hundred eighty-nine ninety-one. The lawn mower is a hundred fifty-one ninety-nine. We have one other bid, and it is from Hugh Williams. He bids two hundred and thirty dollars on the Gravely mower. That's all, all of them.
I'll make a motion that we accept a bid from Watson for twelve oh one. He was the high bidder on the truck. And also make a motion that we accept a bid of five seventy-five from Brittany Wyatt on the Gravely mower.
I'll take it.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, someone make a motion to include these, I think there's seven resolutions here. I'm gonna read one.
So move.
And then, we'll, we'll move from there, and I'll just read the, uh, locations.
I shall move.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Resolution number R dash nineteen dash twenty-eight dash A. Resolution in accordance with ordinance number two zero one declaring a nuisance, providing a lien on property and other purposes. Whereas on May two, nineteen eighty-three, the city council of the city of Bonnaw, White County, Arkansas passed ordinance number two oh one, which is an ordinance providing for the condemnation and removal of houses, buildings, and/or structures constituting a nuisance within the corporate limits, providing for a penalty thereof, therefore, and for other purposes. And whereas, a motion has been made by the city council of the city of Bonnaw, Arkansas, that the property described as parcel number zero zero three dash zero zero eight three eight dash zero 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 consists, consisting of block zero one three, lots seven through nine, McKay addition, commonly called four oh four Clark Street, be declared to constitute a nuisance as provided in said ordinance number two zero one. Whereas, the city council of the city of Bonnaw pursuant to ordinance number two zero one has the right to condemn any house, building, or structure which constitutes a nuisance. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved as follows. The property as described above and belonging to Clintus and Dorothy Thompson is hereby declared to be a nuisance in accordance with ordinance number two zero one and of the city council of the city of Bonnaw, Arkansas. Two, a true or certified copy of this resolution shall be mailed to the owner of the above-described property in accordance with said ordinance. And if the nuisance is not abated within thirty days, the city will take all action available to it in accordance with the remaining provisions of ordinance number two zero one. At the same time, as the true or certified copy of this resolution is mailed to the owner of the above-described property, a copy of this resolution shall be posted at a conspicuous place on the house, building, and/or structure constituting the nuisance. If the whereabouts or address of said owner is not known, the posting of this, of the copy of this resolution will suffice as noticed as provided by ordinance number two zero one. It has been determined that this resolution is necessary and is vital to the health, welfare, and safety of the public. Therefore, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage.
So you're, we're gonna do them individually?
Uh-huh.
I move we accept the resolution number R dash nineteen dash twenty-eight A.
Second.
Okay, the next resolution number will be-
I don't use.
All those in favor? I got unanimous here. Uh, nineteen dash twenty-nine, and this is property located at parcel number zero zero three dash zero zero, zero zero eight one four dash zero zero one, consisting of block zero zero eight, lots one and two, McKay addition, commonly called three oh eight Clark Street, and its property belonged to William Gary Brown.
I move we accept the resolution number R dash nineteen dash twenty-nine.
Second.
All those in favor? This property is, uh, zero zero three, parcel number zero zero seven three two dash zero zero zero, consisting of block zero zero one, lots eighteen through twenty-two, Love and Henry addition, commonly called six oh seven Richardson Street. And it is property belonging to Eddie Watson.
It's a building out back. I'll make a motion we accept that.
Second.
Billy, you seconded that. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, this one is, uh, ru- resolution number nineteen dash thirty-one. Uh, property parcel number zero zero three dash zero zero seven six five dash zero zero zero, consisting of block zero zero one, lots twenty-six through twenty-eight, McKay addition, commonly called one oh four Collison Street. And it is property belonging to Bailey and Brown, Polk, Alvin-
Danette.
Danette? Danette? Danette.
Hopefully they can work it out.
I'll make a motion we accept.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Dennis seconded? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Hi, we must have, Chuck, we must have numbered these incorrectly because I don't see a thirty-two. Okay, these numbers will have to be changed. The next one is gonna be thirty-two. And it is property located at zero zero three dash zero zero three zero nine dash zero zero zero, consisting, consisting of block zero, uh, forty-two, lot one, Bonnaw original town addition, commonly called six oh two Fifth Street. Property belonging to Fort Angel Properties.
I shall move.
Second by Dennis. All those in favor? That's unanimous. The next-
Question. Six oh two fifth. Where do we live?
They went down there, you know.
Where?
For a whole lot of it off on the corner. The city actually provided them that up for him.
I'll agree with you.
Yeah. And now they just stopped.
I've-
We never condemned the house.
Yeah, I've, I've got, I've got to go see it. I don't place the number.
Lindsey Clumming, we never condemned his house. We sent him the warning letter back in March. He sent back a nice letter saying he was gonna refurbish it, rebuild it, would have it finished by August.
Hopefully he's gonna come and ask for more time because they've done some really good work with that house.
And I called him three times. He's been real nice and courteous, but he's always got the same story. Yep.
The next one is thirty-three. It is, uh, property located at zero zero three dash zero 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 nine zero dash zero zero zero, consisting of block zero one three, lot ten and half of eleven. Bonnaw original town addition, commonly called four oh eight Market Street. And its property belonging to the Bonnaw Historic Preservation, uh, Commission or Committee. And it is, uh, a hotel and an old wooden railroad car.
Christian?
Craig.
I'll make a motion we accept that.
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That's, that's what I said. It, it went. Huh?
The one on Elm Street.
Well, it went. Either we don't have them. Okay, you're welcome to look at what I have. Uh, if it's, do you have it with you?
No, I have, I think it was on with their seven.
Okay, I, I have, uh.
There's only six in this package.
Six in the package.
It's, the, the numbers were messed up. That's why I knew something was wrong because there's a, there's a thirty-two missing. I don't have the thirty-two.
I don't have.
Well, you had, you had to have some originals if I made copies.
Right, I, I had the original, uh, and I did use the address.
If you, you, if you, do you have the original with you, Nancy?
No, maybe. You have the original, but there were seven, and we talked about it. There's seven. There's one missing.
You can go look in her, uh, office.
We're going to go into executive session and look for it.
It won't do me any good to go look because I gave everything back to Nancy. I don't thi, I don't think that's right, but y'all, except to y'all.
I think we have to have a resolution number.
Yeah.
There is a resolution somewhere. Okay, we'll do it. We'll do that.
Mary Lou, do you have a copy of it? What property was it?
It is the Market Street Apartments.
What's Chase Ball, Chase Ball?
Collins Building.
We never did condemn.
We're going to executive session.
Help to the bank, and they check where's the time to show them, you know, and.
Now, here's a, here's a thirty-two. I, I have thirty-two, but I, West Market Street?
Yes, ma'am.
Two hundred through two oh six West Market?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, the number, the number now is going to change on this resolution to thirty?
Four.
Thirty-four?
Yeah.
Okay, it just changed to thirty-four. Does everybody, does anybody have that in their package?
No.
Okay, uh, the property is, uh, parcel number zero zero three dash zero zero four 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 dash zero zero zero, consisting of block four oh, block zero zero four, point four two acres, Brickyard Edition, commonly called two hundred through two oh six West Market Street, and, and it belongs to Larry Wiles.
Move we accept that resolution?
Second.
All those in favor?
Except for, is there four units there? Four units.
We're going to, uh, temporarily adjourn while we go into executive session. We shouldn't be there very long.
With our six units.
Goods that need to be voted on. First one's going to be, uh, about the Parks and Recreation Bill. Would you put that in?
We've, uh, had an, come to an agreement with Chris Johnson to, uh, put him under contract to serve as the Parks Director for two thousand twenty. Uh, it'll be him and his family both, but, uh, I've got the revised duties and responsibilities that are a little different than what we had for Gary Vest because Gary was an employee, so it's a little different, but it's more in line with the contractor. Uh, we have an agreement on compensation. We will pay, the contractors will receive sixteen hundred and fifty dollars per month from January through the month of July, and a thousand dollars a month from August through October. Contractor will maintain and oversee both sports complexes for the city, which includes mowing. They will use our mower. Other than that, the duties are about the same. They will organize the youth sports program, uh, oversee paid and volunteer staff, maintain records and fund solicited. Uh, they'll get quoted bids for equipment. Uh, they'll do the notifications of the public for, uh, any kind of program that's going on. Uh, they will make sure compliance with state statutes, city ordinances, and regulations, uh, maintain working relationship with the school representative as it pertains to use of city facilities. They will represent the department at council meetings and other public meetings. Uh, they will report to the Parks and Recreation Committee and/or the mayor. Uh, they will represent the city at various league meetings. And while traveling, they will be reimbursed, uh, for their expense while traveling on behalf of the city. Would like to make a motion that we accept this. Now, they will not, they will not have anything to do with the concession stand, and they will not, uh, collect funds, uh, such as, such as gate. Uh, they will sell ads and keep records of it, signs, and, uh, keep a record and team sponsorships, keep a record of that, turn it into, to the Clark Treasure.
I second that motion.
Not city parks, they'll just.
He just said they were. He said they were going to collect funds and sell ads.
No.
I collect.
But they're sending them to me?
Yeah.
So no money passes through their hands at all?
Same one?
Uh, did we get a second on that?
Yeah, I would do that.
Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous.
Okay, another item was, uh, addressing, uh, our current code inspector. Uh, we agreed to, uh, a termination as of January first, and, uh, we've also agreed to hiring a new, uh, code inspector enforcer, uh, which will start, could start immediately. Uh, we're not sure on that exact time, but, uh, we intend to hire him, uh, as soon as possible, which will be Mr. Kevin Smith. Everybody should know Kevin. He's been, he's retired Cersei, uh, fireman, and he's been working as a transfer, uh, deputy, uh, transferring prisoners in the Bayland over to the detention center for quite some time. So he will still be working for the, uh, Sheriff's Department through the end of January, and he'll be working part-time for us. Uh, we only agreed to term this at the start. Needs to be effective immediately.
Make a motion to hold it.
Second.
All those in favor? So did you say that Chuck is terminated January one?
Yes. That was part of that motion.
Um, purple bills? I move we pay the street fund payables in the amount of eight thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars and eight cents.
All those in favor? That's unanimous.
I move we pay the general fund payables in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars and forty-two cents.
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous.
I move we pay the water and sewer payables in the amount one hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred seven dollars and three cents.
Second.
All those in favor? There's one more, Johnny. Did you see it on the back here? It's, well. Must be back here, behind the street. It's a Parks bill, Agritur.
I saw four hundred and something dollars?
Four fifty-four sixty-five.
I s, I saw that, and then I forgot to question it. I move we pay the Parks Recreation payables in the amount of four hundred fifty-four dollars and sixty-five cents.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. I have one more bill that didn't get on the list. It is, uh, Ballinov Veterinary Clinic, eight seventy-seven ninety-one.
Eight seventy-seven ninety-one?
Uh huh.
I'll second you.
All those in favor? That's unanimous.
Hey, I've got one more thing. Uh, finished cleaning up the, uh, Ballinov Lake. Uh, it's been a robbery project up to this point. Uh, we've got fifteen hundred set aside for a Ballinov Lake, uh, usage, and, uh, I've asked the council to allow me to spend that with, uh, Stuart Parsons. He's agreed to, uh, do what we need to finish out there with the cleanup, and, uh, then he's going to donate at least that much more.
Is that in the nineteen budget, Tim? Do you remember?
I don't have clues, Johnny. I've not looked.
Okay.
And I don't have the nineteen. Yeah, I do. I would have it in here.
I wouldn't for sure, so I didn't want to speak. I knew I'd seen it in the twenty-twenty, but I was thinking it could just transfer to nineteen.
There's not any money appropriated in the like for, uh, as a matter of fact, there's been ninety dollars spent over, but there's no money appropriated there that I see, except if it's somewhere else not missing.
We can't, Michael, we can't get a motion on that too much next meeting. I amend the budget and add fifteen hundred. For this year. We take the general fund. You want to do that?
I'd like to finish this project, you know, in this year if we could, and start a new with it, you know, totally with the city, you know, after January.
So move. I'll second it to you.
Okay, Billy makes the motion. Johnny seconds to let Barth spend fifteen hundred dollars more to Stuart Parsons. To finish the project.
Right. Phase one, you're right.
Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous.
Appreciate everybody coming. Is there anybody that would like to speak tonight for any item that was on the agenda?
So move.
Appreciate you coming, Tom.